I'm here. Doug, I have two quick questions that I guess they could hold for the mass discussion. The person who wrote that the police could find someone watching their dog. As I understand it, mask ordinance is fully outdoors and you're within close proximity of somebody else. It's them watching their dog and keeping their distance. There's no violation.
I think that's quite enough. And it only written, it's going to leave. You're outside, you're inside, you're out. You know, it's so much. I mean, your plan might, well, might not be.
But, uh. That was my understanding also of the person. The person who, that is, that he was. He's located in, maybe he can't have people over to his house. Yeah. Well, so, uh, so. We're aware of that. Yeah, okay, we don't have to, we don't have to go into it now, but I was, I was surprised. And, and thank you. I'm sorry. We're. Yes. Very well. Uh.
(beep).
(beep). I'm Dan Trevino. I'm the vice chair of the Patent Township Board of Supervisors. And I hereby call this meeting of Ju-, of August 19th, Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Citizens can participate several ways. They can simply watch the live telecast on CNET. They can, if they want to make comments and they're not physically present, they can call the phone numbers that are listed on the agenda. And a phone will be answered here and a staff member will relay your comments to the board. First item of business is pledge of allegiance. So if you're able, please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. If there any members of the public wish to make comments to the board on items that are not on the agenda, this is your time to make those comments. If you have comments related to anything on the agenda, please hold your comments until that agenda item comes up for discussion. Do we have any public comments on something not on the agenda? Nobody physically present?
Let's give it about a 10 count, see if anybody calls in.
Okay. Okay, seeing none at the present, let's move on. First item on the agenda, or the next item on the agenda is the presentation, Public Hearings 3A Ordinance on Masking and Gathering of Size Limits. Do you want to introduce this, Doug?
Yeah, I can. We've been, we talked about this very briefly at the last, at our work session, August 5th. The Borough of State College did pass an ordinance and then updated that ordinance here in the last few days. The agenda materials also included a letter from PSU President Dr. Eric Barron noting that with Penn State resuming in-person classes, students started arriving this week. This, the campus, they are doing several things on campus, including testing and requiring masks. And they were asked the municipalities to look at the potential of enacting certain organ-, or certain ordinances and requirements for off-campus activities also. So that's where we are today. As we noted, there was a, the original draft was circulated when the agenda initially went out last Friday. Yesterday afternoon, there was a revised, updated draft. That was populated with comments from both me, those are the ones in peach, and also from the township solicitor. And I was looking at him on screen. It said who made what, but I noticed when it printed out, didn't get that. But the blue ones are from the solicitor, the ones in peach color are from me. Made several updates to that original ordinance. Some were corrections of, of names and spelling and style and format. They did not make any substantive changes to the ordinance. We also included some updates based on what the State College Borough passed on August 17th. Those include an updated, or include a new definition of gatherings, an exemption for masks for children under two years old, registration process under Section 5A to exceed the gathering size limit of currently, that is 10. And there were some further clarifications on the applicability and exceptions under Section 5F. There also, we added some comments, as I noted, from both myself and the solicitor regarding certain sections which the board could include or exclude. They're pretty much optional at this point. And the final bullet point, again, we notes that other potential changes that could be made to the draft mainly to do with gathering size number and the fines. They, some of those can be increased or decreased. We can talk about those in a little more detail when we get there. But certain changes could be made that would not require a re-advertising of this, of this document. Those changes, all these changes that have been incorporated do not require re-advertising. They make the ordinance less restrictive, meaning that there's less regulations on people. So therefore, we, if we went the other way and made it more restrictive, we'd have to re-advertise and hold another hearing at some point in the future. With that, just note that we've had several comments received. Both went, went out Tuesday afternoon in the first supplement. And then I think we had seven or eight more that came in after that went out and prior to around four o'clock today. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair.
Okay, let's, let's have a board discussion first, and then after that, we'll have public comments, the citizen comments on, on this. So anybody, Board of Supervisors, have questions or wish to comment on any of these items on this ordinance? I can't see, so you'll have to. Uh, Elliot, yes, Elliot has his hand raised. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that the soccer youth team will be able to play.
The soccer teams.
Well, if, kind of, yeah, if, if the teams are 11 or 12 people total, I don't see why we have to block that.
Uh, one or two things we could put in. If those are under Center Region Parks and Rec's purview, they've already accounted. We would provide an exception for those. One thing Parks and Rec would do to make sure those, those teams or whatever would have a COVID-19 safety plan in place for social distancing and masking. Those things have been exempted. If there's some more, if we need to get into a little more detail, we can talk. We have a representative from Center Soccer here. But my reading of what we're, and I think the intent is that we would exempt those as long as they had some, they were working with Center Region Parks and Rec and had a COVID safety plan in, and then also did not exceed the state, the state mandated gathering sizes of 250 for an outdoor event.
Any other comments, questions from the board?
Yes.
Anita, go ahead.
Yes. I support us passing this ordinance and I support the possible fine being at the $300 level. I agree with one of the residents who wrote to the board, Kathleen Dominic, who writes that a great many people currently are not following the health procedures of wearing masks. And that, she writes that, and they will not unless there is a law in place and the law has sharp teeth. I think that it's incumbent on all of us in the community to care for one another's health. And I know there are different perspectives on that, but I think the research is undeniable that wearing a mask is a primary, major way that we can protect others from this virus. And I would support this ordinance and I would support the $300 fine. My son lives up in Cambridge, Massachusetts, across from Boston, and they have had the $300 fine in place since early April. And the word gets out. Hopefully, no one will have to pay a $300 fine because everyone will abide by the call to be the best neighbor they can be and wear masks on, to protect others. I also see this ordinance as helping to protect the health of our business communities. As you may know, there is a Facebook site called Mask Strong, which, in which people post, post about businesses that they feel safe going into because of the number of folk who are wearing masks. And I don't think it should be incumbent on the employees of these businesses to have to enforce the mask ordinance. And by making it a law, and should our police have to be called? Our police are protecting the employees. I think our police are protecting the health of the businesses. We want to see all our businesses stay strong. So I support this ordinance and the fine.
Okay, I think, Anita. Pam, Rob? Yes, go ahead, Pam.
I'm in support of this, 100%, and to support our colleagues in the other municipalities. My concern, though, is in the other municipalities, and this question is to Chief. Chief, do we have a relationship with college borough police? I have a constituent that lives there near some of the sororities and fraternities. And this weekend, it was like party, um, as, as normal. No masks, drinking out in the front, um, because they are a senior, they're afraid to call the police knowing that retaliation from the fraternities. Is there a way that they in college could do a routine sweep around just to check on some of the fraternities and sororities that may not be in compliance?
So, um, there's actually a couple of different options as well for, for an individual. State College has a couple of different ways you can report things anonymously. They have a, an email set up and a website set up through the State College Borough. You can go on, and you do not have to provide any identifying information. You can just let them know about an issue. You also could call the non-800, the 1-800 number for the dispatchers. Um, and they, you don't necessarily have to provide your information to them, but you can tell them about an issue and they will send the police out to look at it. Um, but by all means, I can talk to Chief Gardner and let him know that that concern was brought up to you and pass it along to him so that his officers are aware of, of that issue.
Thank you so much because it affects all our communities. And I'm in support. And thank you to our board who continues to stand for our community and the health of our community and our police officers. Thank you, and let's move forward.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised, so let's open this up for citizen comments. Go ahead, and identify yourself.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm, I'm Matt Vidic from President, President of Center Soccer Association. I just wanted to offer just some information for your consideration before you approve this. I had sent out an email a few days ago when I saw this was under consideration to kind of, to detail for you all the steps Center Soccer has taken to implement a safe return to play for our players under this COVID situation. We've put out to, to all of our members that are participating optionally, we have like a 15-point plan that's, that everyone has to sign. Our procedures include checking in. We're tracking everybody that attends. We're in a position to shut anything down if there's a case reported. We have similar measures in place that other organizations that are exempted in this are also providing. So, so with that in mind, I'd just like to make sure that before this is approved, that we are able to continue to participate on parks within patent township like Circleville Park. And, and the other issue to bring forward is in Section 2 on Page 2, the wearing of face masks and face coverings. It does state that when coming into contact with any person who is not that person's family or household member, whether indoors or outdoors, including but not limited to contact during gatherings, curbside pickup, drive-through, and food truck purposes and service calls, purchases, masks are required. But then it also says in an exception on Page 3, while participating, it's in Item 2, Part C, while participating in recreational physical activities, whether outdoor or indoor when involving 10 or fewer, they're not required in that instance. But what I would like to suggest is that, and the reason for the suggestion is from the PA Department of Health website, they are not recommending masks be worn during athletic competition when it would interfere with the, the competition. When, if we're running a soccer program, we're always going to have 10 or more people. We'll probably have 15 to 25 to 30, depending on the size of the, the actual event. And what I'd like to suggest, based on the comments I've heard so far, that in that item, it also, it would, it would allow CRPR sanctioned activities not to be subject to the limit of 10 so that we would be able to actually operate a, a real soccer game without the wearing of masks. And I'd like to just, just for emphasis, state that the PA Department of Health FAQ on, on guidance for COVID, which is what the PIA double A is following, has the question, does the order apply to athletes and sports activities? Initially, it says yes, but then it goes on to say athletes are not required to wear face coverings while actively engaged in workouts and competition. To prevent the wearing of face coverings, but must wear face coverings when on the sidelines, in the dugout, et cetera, and anytime six feet of social distancing is not possible. And that's what we, we've put in place here in, in our plan. We've created a position for youth activities called Field Safety Monitor, which is a risk-cleared position for parents to make sure they can, for parents to be at the field to make sure the children are social distancing while they're playing, or off the field, I mean. Mask wearing would not be required, our suggestion, while they're playing, but when they're off-field, they would have to implement that. And we have people there on-site to do it. We also have a substantial adult participation that would like to play 9v9 or more. So that would be at 18, just on-field, which would like to be exempt from. And, um, you know, we, we are taking this very seriously, and I, I think this is a well-thought-out plan. We're just so far downstream from the initial request. I, I don't think when Dr. Barron sent this out to all the municipalities, they had our use in mind. And I, I sense the greater good here, but I'd just like to make sure that we're, we're covered so that the people that live in the community and, and are athletically minded and look, looking to do something to improve their health are able to do so. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. He has suggested additional wording to, related to exemption specifically for individuals engaged in athletic competition.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions for Mr. Vidic. So all your activities are taking place on fields that are, you're rented from Center Region Parks and Rec?
Correct.
Okay. And again, you said you are following CDC guidelines or state guidelines in terms of recreational or sports activities?
We're, we're following guidelines that are put in place by our governing body, which is part of US Soccer, which is coming from the CDC, and then PA Department of Health, all the way down. They've been, this is our governing body that we, we're required to provide these rules.
Okay, but they, they're based on CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health guidance?
Correct.
Okay. I just note that the, the, the item that you cited, 2C, under Section 3, wearing a face covering exemptions, is only advisory. It's not, it's not a mandatory. There, it says, wearing a face covering may be advisable, but it's not a required. I, I think the gathering size is one issue. The masking is another issue. We've, we've exempted the gathering size under the fact that you're, you're renting space or, from CRPR and they, and, and they provided that. I think if you'd like, Mr. Trevino, we can add in under wearing a face covering exemptions. We can put in there something with groups engaged in recreational sporting activities following a plan that's based on CDC and PA Department of Health guidance.
I, I think that would clarify and, and not leave it up to interpretation. The second thing I was going to ask the board members, what about non-organized athletics? Let's say a group of, of citizens want to get together and kick a ball around on, on a soccer field. They're not part, they're, they're not a club and they're not renting from CRPR. Is that a group that you would also exempt? Anybody want to address that on the board? I don't see any hands up.
Yeah, I would think.
Pam, go ahead.
I would like for the, someone that has the authority to tell us, to advise us on that issue, Dan. That's a great question. Great question. Is there somebody there that could give us some kind of guidance?
I, I think the issue is we're willing to make exemptions from these, these restrictions. Remember, our, our gathering size at this point is 10 for inside a house or, let me make sure I read this.
It says, outdoor or indoor.
Yeah. So at, at a residential property, there's, there's a limit of 10 people. There is a process where you can ask for an approval if you want to register some, a party or something, and you can then have a gathering of up to 25, which is the state limit on an indoors. Outdoors, we have gatherings limited in township parks to 25 persons. And there we have no other waiver procedure, although we have exempted those issues, those items that are part of Center Region Parks and Rec programming and sanctioned activities, which means, um, you know, if they've, if they're running fields, they're, they've asked for a, a safety plan. So I guess if you want to look at people who are larger groups, what we want them to do is be following some set of safety guidance based on CDC, Centers of Disease Control, or Pennsylvania Department of Health guidance. And, you know, that they're taking responsibility upon themselves. So, I mean, one of our biggest issues, I think, that we're going to be dealing with is, is the party issue, as Ms. Rob noted in the, in the Borough and, you know, on some fraternities. We've seen many videos from around the country, from universities around the country, where, uh, you know, we've seen very large parties with no thought to social gathering or masking or any of those issues. So, at least from my point of view. my point of view, that's, that's our primary, one of our primary goals in, in addressing this issue tonight. I'd be wary of making a lot of exemptions for, for gathering sizes just for that very fact. I mean, again, the state has limited outdoor gatherings to 50. We're at 25. There's a big delta there difference. If the board wanted to go to something different, they could, but I would try to be consistent about, you know, gatherings that are, are not one of the listed exemptions.
Okay. Any other board comments? Yes, Anita, go ahead.
Yeah. I like very much how the Center, the Soccer Association is having folks return their mask when they're standing on the sidelines. I think that's a good health prevention. I know, too, that it'll change the flavor of the game. I, my son played soccer all through school, and parents on the sidelines shout and cheer. I hope the Soccer Association has other ways that parents can express their support. I don't know if you're going to have them banging a drum or things so that you're not shouting or singing or projecting in that way. But I think the fact of maintaining the good health that you wear a mask on the sidelines, and I, so folks who are just doing a pickup game, I'm not sure how that would be followed.
Okay, thank you. Pam, go ahead.
Have you or Doug seen the 15 questions that the parents have to sign?
I have not.
From Center Soccer? No, I have not.
It, it's a 15, there are 15 stated responsibilities that we have. It lists our club responsibilities, the coaches' responsibilities for teams, field safety monitors, the parents and the player responsibilities. They all have to acknowledge them. And I, I don't know where the camera is, but like this, these are just the parent responsibilities on this sheet here. And they're on our website. I included a link to that in the email that I sent.
No problem. I'd just like you have some form of a check-in list of what the parents and your organization is doing to protect your players as well as your coaches and your staff. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to add that one sentence.
Yeah, what I've done is, under exemptions, which is Section 3, subsection 1, I've added a subsection G to the exemptions, which reads, "Wearing the face covering shall not be required under the following circumstances." It's G's, "Groups engaged in organized recreation or sports activities who are following a COVID safety plan based on guidance from Centers for Disease Control and Pennsylvania Department of Health."
Okay, thank you.
That works. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It had its hand up.
Elliot, go ahead, Elliot.
So, it's clear then that the parents and others in the, watching the games will be wearing masks?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Any other comments, questions? Any, any other citizens wish to speak to this? Thank you. So, I guess we can entertain a motion to approve this ordinance now?
If there are no suggested alterations or amendments to what's been presented, you could, sir.
Well, I, first, I just acknowledge that we did receive additional comments, as Doug mentioned, that came in between yesterday and today at 4:00. I read all those before the meeting. Most of them were in favor of the ordinance. There were three that were advised caution or modification of certain sections, which Doug has already read. And so we acknowledged the receipt of those comments. So, I'm, we're ready to entertain a motion on this ordinance number 2020-
Any other comments they want to make on this ordinance?
Elliot has its hand up again.
No, I think they're here for another agenda. Elliot, go ahead. Go ahead, Elliot.
I'd like to move the motion and incorporate the changes that Doug has suggested.
Thank you. Motion's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by who? Pam?
Yep, by Pam.
Seconded by Pam. Any more discussion on this motion to accept ordinance number 2020-?
Mr. Chairman?
2009. Yes. Who is, who's speaking?
Your solicitor.
Oh, Betsy, go ahead.
I, I want to clarify and make sure that in approving this, there are some comments in the margins and some things that have been brought up in discussion between the municipalities. The district attorney raised some issues. And also say to you that a lot of my comments were simply because I, I want you folks to be following the law. I understand the concerns and issues, but I wanted to point those out and make sure that, at least on some of these issues, for example, the requirement of persons to provide medical documentation, that exceeds the requirements currently of the Pennsylvania Department of Health. I think that is a, a step that is, is fraught with potential issues. I think there were a couple of other things, Doug, that I think we brought back in and adjusted carefully some of the language, which I think addressed the concerns about some due process matters and the ability of persons to exercise their First Amendment rights. But I think that the one thing that does, that I do need to point out to you is that I think the authority for the board to exceed, and what I mean exceed, you have drastically reduced the numbers of people that can be involved in events beyond what the current Commonwealth order is. You do not have a health department, and under the state health code, you wouldn't actually have a health department because counties of the second class are not permitted to have one. So, what does that mean? As I noted in the comments, that essentially means that somebody could challenge your authority to go beyond the prescriptions in the governor's order. And if somebody wanted to challenge that, they could, not only could they challenge the issuance of the fines, but they could argue that you have affected their rights in, in another way and bring some other kind of claim. So I just want to point it out to the board. I understand the concern about the parties. I understand the need to be consistent, but I think you, you are placing your officers in a position where they're going to be asked to enforce this, and there will be times when they attempt to enforce this, that the party obviously will stop doing what they're doing, but will be able to bring a legal challenge to the authority that exceeds that of what the state allows. So I point that out to you. I also would point out to you that I don't think any fines that you collect are lawfully those of the township, that under the health code, because you don't have a health department, it, those would become, those would be remitted to the Commonwealth. We're in an awkward situation in Center County because we don't have a health department. That doesn't make us unusual. In fact, there are only five or six counties of the 67 counties of the Commonwealth that have a health department, and that is largely because nobody has the, the financial resources to have what is required for a health department, which is a, a license MD, et cetera. And even the borough's health department is not recognized by the Commonwealth, and the reporting in this community, which would be the basis by which you would create these regulations, is all done to the State Department of Health and not to your own local department of health. So, that just is by way of background to explain what the health law is and why I raise those issues in my comments on the ordinance.
Thank you, Betsy. Reactions? Yes, Elliot?
I think we should rescind, I'll rescind my motion to pass this thing because it's not going to hold up. Let's match those guidelines and see what we can, if we need to help convince the state to change their, their guidelines. If an emergency develops and everybody's catching the disease, they're certainly going to change their requirements. In the meantime, we shouldn't exceed them and just wind up having this thing get thrown out.
So, Elliot?
I mean, the, the solicitors provide their opinion. We've also had conversations with the DA who thinks we're, we have an enforceable ordinance. So, it's not unusual that in times like this, we have a difference of legal opinions either. If all you want to do is match the, the state, probably you'd have to look back at the fines, too, but however the board would like to proceed at this point.
Well, the state doesn't have fines, right?
There are fines that are, and I'd have to look back to Chief Jolly, who looked into it. There are fines that are applicable to certain issues. Again, we've had those on the books since the first orders came down from the Department of Health. Now, they're all, again, based on state laws, and I can't remember, but they're, they're not at the $300 level. Chief Jolly, do you remember, recall what some of those fines were under the state laws that the Department of Health cited?
Yeah, so from my recollection, I think the lowest was $50, and the highest was, it was not 300, I believe, but the lowest was 50.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Anita.
I have a question. I have a question for the solicitor. Is your concern mostly about potential lawsuits with the requirement for a medical documentation that people would be required to, to produce? Is that the major concern that, that you have?
I, I think that's part of it, but you're restricting people in their private residence to 10 persons, which is lower than the governor sets out now. And that's a potential property right deprivation of my property rights, and I could make a claim under Section 1983 that your officers are enforcing something that is adverse to my rights, which is true also of requiring me to produce medical documentation. I, I think the fundamental issue here is, if somebody wants to make an issue under the ordinance, and I understand that the district attorney is willing to enforce the ordinance, but he will face the same concern. Laws, laws are only valid if you have the authority to put them in place. And we have all kinds of criminal laws that, that sometimes get overturned for that very reason. So, I'm not saying do away with the ordinance. It's on its surface, but I think you have to be aware of these issues and the potential for persons to challenge it. And I, I do understand that we are essentially policing for one problem, which is, we're concerned that people who come back to this, we've not had an issue with this until now, right? We've been under these guidelines for, I understand, Anita, but we've been under these guidelines for six months, and we are concerned that people are going to have parties in their homes. I don't have a sense, and the chief can certainly respond to me, that we have had an overwhelming number of calls of individuals in patent township asking the police to come to their homes because their neighbor is having 25 people in a swimming party in their backyard. That may be happening, and chief can tell us, and maybe we, that maybe there really is an issue. I think what we're legislating against is the potential for young people who are coming back to town to have parties. I understand that, but you have to recognize that there will also, that enforcement is not just in residential housing units. It's going to happen at persons residences and places that they've already been doing these things. I'm just saying, I, I am concerned. Let's put it that way.
Anita, you have follow-up to that?
I would say that there have been concerns raised about people who have not worn masks in businesses. And that while I agree with you that, that it's, the anxiety level has gone up with the anticipation of additional people coming back and what their behaviors would be, I, I have heard concern about current people that are not wearing masks in businesses.
I agree with it.
And the sense I've had from some of the community feedback I perceive is a concern that people would like to be able to go into businesses feeling that it is safe for them to do so. And that aspect, I feel especially strong about.
And I agree, Anita, that the, the issues in, in businesses may be very important and may need to be rectified, but you have gone beyond that. And, and we know in our jurisprudence that when we start to regulate what people can do in their homes, we get into a lot of problems. So I get the business part of this. I get the public part of this. I get the need to protect public spaces, but when you go behind, beyond my garage door, people get very sensitive about, about that, and I think we need to be prepared that some people might question our authority in that instance.
How would you change the ordinance to feel comfortable about it from your perspective, Betsy? What would you, what would you change in it that would give you a confidence level that should someone challenge it, we are within the range of possibilities?
Well, I mean, again, anything we do in here that exceeds what the Department of Health has in place is a potential problem. It's a potential red flag. I do think that the restrictions in people's homes is potentially problematic, and I did even say in my comments that I think the township gets put in a bad position if we become the police of whether you can be, you can have more than 10 but less than 25, right? Now, we're put in the role of being judge and jury on whether your event or mine is better, and I'm not sure that's a good position to be in. I think limiting people in the parks, although it sounds to me as though you've addressed that with, with organized events, so Doug and I had already talked about things like Center Soccer. I think what Center Soccer has proposed is exactly what Little League did, and as far as I'm aware, they didn't really have any outbreaks over the summer, playing Little League, not using the dugouts, kids wearing masks at the sides and so forth. But that, to me, that's one of them. Again, Anita, you pointed out, I don't think we want to put our police in a position where they've got to ask people for medical documentation. I, I mean, you know, chief, you can talk to me about, you don't think that's an issue, and you think people will comply, and maybe that's good, but I'm a little concerned about how that works. So that would be my, my couple of comments, Anita.
So, the state order, as I understand it, the indoor gathering is 25 and the outdoor is 250. Is that how so?
It is. And, and incidentally, Allegheny County, which does have a health department, is at 50 outside. That was done, as you all know, they spiked pretty dramatically the end of June, early July, and that was their most recent order. So, you are even exceeding what Allegheny County did at 25.
Is there a number? Is there a number at the outdoor level that you would feel comfortable defending, should it come, should it come to that? Are you recommending we go with the state's?
I would recommend the state's, but I know that's not popular, but I think, I think at the minimum, at least complying, being close to someone like Allegheny County and using their evidence of the fact that they had an outbreak, which was largely driven by social activities in downtown and, and other places, which is 50. So that's not 25, but at least you could tie into that and say, "We looked at their order. We felt that made sense." That's a better argument than us simply saying, "We came up with 25", right? I mean-
So, to go to, perhaps put in the ordinance instead of 25, the limit of 50 outdoors?
Yes.
Okay. I, I would favor that.
Pam, did you have your hand up in the past? Pam Rock?
Yes. Betsy, I just have a question on the medical aspect. If our officers gave a ticket and the person said they, they have a medical documentation saying they don't have to wear masks, once they come to pay the fine, can they show a, a medical notification or documentation instead of having our officers argue the fact of, you know, "Show me your medical documentation"? Or should we-
The ordinance, the, the ordinance right now, Ms. Rob, does say that if they come in within five days, the citation would be, not be issued. in within five days, the citation would be, not be issued if they provide the evidence. The concern that I think has been raised is that they're not required to, the, the state doesn't require people now to, so, so as soon as I cross the Patton Township line and I go into Happy Moon Township, I will not have to produce any information. I can simply say, I do not have to, to produce that. And while we can argue that citizens should know the laws of the jurisdiction that they come to, anybody that comes to State College from another jurisdiction is going to be following the state's guidelines and not necessarily ours.
Okay. Thank you. I'm.
Mr. Chair.
I'm in support of moving this forward, but with the recommendations by Betsy to add the 50 to protect us, but we need to move forward on this. And any, any, any recommendations that Betsy has made needs to be put in, in this ordinance. But we need to move forward.
Okay. Elliot has his hand up. Yes, Elliot?
I think we can separate it into, as Betsy said, your private, which is open to the public, stores are open to the public, parks are open to the public, libraries are open to the public, your house is not open to the public. And so there, I think there's a different requirement, and I think we should follow the state guidelines and change the fine to something lower. If you get a state fine, say for speeding, the ticket may be for $20, $30, and by the time you figure out the cost, it's $150 or $200. So if it's a state, if it's something that goes to the state, it's not going to be the amount that, that we state, I don't think.
I, I could follow up on that real quickly, too. I, I did find the two sections that we can cite from the very beginning of this, from the guidance we got from the governor's office, are the administrative code, and the fine is a sliding fine of not less than $10 and not more than 50. The other section is the Pennsylvania Disease Prevention and Control Law of 1955, which carries a fine of not less than 25 and not more than 300, just for perspective.
Mr. Vice Chair. I, I did talk to Supervisor Whitman this afternoon. She did note that if we wanted to talk about reducing fines, she'd be in favor of reducing the fines for individuals to $100. And that was based partly on some conversations she had with our magisterial district, district judge. And that's the level that Ferguson Township said also.
Okay, so Elliot had rescinded his motion, so we're, we're, we were proceeding and continuing in the discussion phase. So I have heard two suggestions for changes. One is to raise the limit on outdoor gathering size to 50 from 25, and the other change was, I've heard, is to lower the fine from 300 to 100.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Hang on a second, if you could, please. Is there any desire to change the number? We're at 10 now for inside gatherings in a house. Any desire to change that?
That was what I was getting ready to raise my hand on.
Yeah, go ahead, Pam.
Change it. I think Betsy brought up a great comment on you being in your own house for us telling someone 25. That needs to be changed.
How would you change it?
The state recommendation is 25, is it not?
Right.
Yeah, the state mandate is 25.
Okay.
So we would be consistent with the state?
Yes, let's be consistent with the state then.
So Pam is altering, is offering an amendment to your motion, Elliot?
I accept that, and also I think we should end, have a paragraph at the end saying that all this is based on the current conditions and that if, if we come to a more emergency condition, emergency condition, because people aren't abiding by this, they will be bringing on worse penalties, which I guess we, I guess we can't say that, but that's pretty obvious.
Don't we always have that option to amend an ordinance? Yeah, so that's already a part of our authority. We can amend the ordinance anytime we want.
Just takes another ordinance to do it, yeah.
Okay. Also, I would like to thank our solicitor for being on top of the latest things. You've given us good counsel, and though, though some of it I didn't want to hear, I appreciate that, that you have thoroughly researched it and are guiding us in the best way. Thank you.
Any citizen comments about the, the amended motion? No? We've had a, had discussion now, so I'm calling for a vote?
Let me, let me run down quickly one.
Go ahead.
To make sure I have it, and Ms. Dupuy, if you can follow along a little bit and note if we need to make any other changes. Under Section 5A, limitations on gathering size, A, in all housing types, gatherings of more than 25 persons shall be prohibited. We had 10 there before, it's now 25. With that change, we also can strike any, the, the highlighted material below that, so it starts with any exception, because it only provided an exception up to 25, so that, that item would be stricken. Item B, well, let me see, in all housing type, let me go back up to A. In all housing types, inside gatherings of more than 25 people shall be prohibited. Item B.
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure I would say inside. I think I would leave it as it is.
Well, because we're going to conflict then with B, which says outside gatherings.
Well, but that's, that's at or in township of patent, public parks or other municipal properties, so that would apply.
Well, I'll go back to the board members then and ask them if the gathering size of 50 applies just to parks, municipal property, or it also provides to residential properties, which includes the whole gamut of single-family homes, townhomes, and apartments.
I think it's any place open to the public.
Pardon?
I think it's any place open to the public. So if.
Well, the, the area in, okay, the area that we're going to look at.
Right, Elliot's saying public, not residence.
That's going to get the most scrutiny is the common areas at these large apartment complexes, around their pools or something. Do we, and this is where the, the ga, I mean, we could, if you could say it 25, or you can move that up, but.
I, I wasn't thinking of those places any differently from the 25, so, and I'm not sure that the state order would necessarily.
Um, I, that, I couldn't tell you how the state reads them, but.
We could try for 25, but.
Hey, that's fine. We can just then, again, okay, we said all housing types, maybe we want to say inside or outside, or outside gatherings of more than 25 shall be prohibited. And then B, gatherings at or in township of patent, public parks and other municipality, municipal property of more than 50 people shall be prohibited. C remains unchanged. D would just reinforce the, what we talked about with A, the gathering size restriction sell, set forth in order and sell prior, so apply regardless indoors or outdoors. E, I don't know, we can leave it in there just for consistency, but it may not apply now because it talked about the number of household members exceed the limits. I don't think we have any households of more than 25 people. And then F, I don't, provides the exceptions that we've already talked about, and I don't believe we have any more. And then under six, for enforcement, we would be reducing all the fines, the three noted fines, from 300 to $100 in each, in each case. Those are the changes I have, based on the most recent discussion.
What about the, the 50, 50 outside? Where, where is that?
That would be, well, that would apply, that would be under Section 5B, which I've got a different.
So that's, that's changed to 50 from 25?
Correct.
B, 5B, okay.
Correct.
And just to be clear, I, I don't want, necessarily want you to feel you have to call, follow the Allegheny County order, but we did talk about that. There's a specifically saying outdoor events and gatherings of more than 50 persons, so the, the is prohibited, and then they define in their events and gatherings include fairs, festivals, concerts, shows, and groupings. I don't know how far you want to get beyond that because it could affect businesses, except for businesses that naturally have events, like hotels or resorts, they're going to be subject to the governor's order.
Yeah, yeah, they're not covered by this. So anything in park that the parks, Center Region Parks and Rec has provided a permit for, which would be a concert or anything, those are, all be exempt.
Yeah, and my only point, I guess, Doug, is that I think in Allegheny County that they were extending that to, to, that they were trying to limit, you know, things like you mentioned in the common area of a residential structure, right?
Yeah.
Which wouldn't otherwise have a limitation. I don't know if, if, I'm not sure we want to go to that distinction. I think simply leaving Part A, the first item with 25, means that any residential structure, whether it's in your common area, if you're a condo or apartment complex, or if it's in your own yard, so.
Any other comments from the board before we vote on the, on the motion? All right, let's, you ready, Doug?
So again, Elliot made the, who moved the amended? Was that Elliot?
Yeah, Elliot moved the amended.
And Anita seconded it again?
Yes.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, all in favor of passing this ordinance number 20, 20-609, as, as it has been modified? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No one's opposed, so passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the July 2020 Public Safety Report. Chief Jolly.
Dan, could I do a quick follow-up on the mask thing? Because one of the residents, Catherine Keim, K-E-I-M, I don't, I'm mispronouncing her name, made the very good point that if we do publish, if we do pass an ordinance, it be well-publicized. And I wanted to ask whether there might be some communication with landlords in Patton Township. I, I know that Penn State has said that they were being in touch with landlords, but whether we could send out an email or some communication to the landlords to let them know of this? And secondly, could we think of some digital street signs when people are coming into town? Mask up, it's the law? Or signs that could go, that we could offer to businesses? I'm wondering if we could talk briefly about follow-up communication efforts within the township and the region. I had talked with Eric Bernier of College Township, that they were going to do street signs that we could coordinate the same message for people coming into town. I wondered if we could take a moment just to talk about that, if there was any direction to staff.
Yeah, we can, you know, we'll work with the, the other municipalities through municipal managers groups to, I know they're, they're waiting to see what we came up with. I promised them that tomorrow morning. So they are, they are looking, I will pass on the issue about digital signs, what we have, we don't have one ourselves, but we can go get some pricing and look at what that might, might cost. Might be an opportunity to work with PennDOT on their, some of their, with their signs, their digital message signs they have. We'll explore that, too, with those folks. Chief Jolly, would it be possible through our community policing officer to reach out to the, the large apartment complexes and, and let them know and provide them some, some background information?
Yeah, certainly, and the other thing I was thinking, too, is that I, I can verify I provided them to you, Doug, but the borough had a lot of flyers and, and some different things regarding the masking and the gathering size, waiting in lines, so I think it might be a good idea for us to maybe put out something like that, that we could give to the complexes that they can forward on to the residents.
Yeah, and I think Center Region Emergency Management and our Public Information Officer, we're going to look at some issues, some items that would be more appropriate for social media also. So all those efforts are underway.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll proceed now to the Public Safety Report. Oh, wait a minute, Elliot has his hand up. Elliot, yes?
Well, we have a lot of creative people in the township, and I was wondering if we could have a contest with, say, a 10-day deadline to design some of these things, and the winner gets a, a ticket to the, the next time we have a township dinner.
If you'd like, we can, we can put something together.
Okay.
Only if the other people think that's appropriate.
Well, I think.
I like the idea.
Yeah. Doug has made note of that.
Yeah, we could do some, or Grubhub gift cards or something like that.
Okay. Ready to move on? Chief Jolly, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So the police department saw a very, very busy month in July. We had a pretty serious string of, of some, some serious crimes, which we'll talk about here in a moment, I'll line them in the department notes. But as you see, we had 104 traffic stops, 34 citations, no parking tickets. We had 19 criminal arrests, and our bike patrol, they were out there for about 46 miles, did 111 business checks, handled four incidents, and did one vacation home check. With some staffing and the heat, that, that limited our numbers just a little bit on bike patrol. Under the department notes, again, we had a very, very busy month, some serious cases, so I want to take some time to highlight these. At the beginning of the month, we had three males that were from Maryland who were arrested for theft and criminal mischief. These males used a crowbar to break into a Bitcoin ATM machine at a local business here in our, our township. It was very calculated, they knew exactly what they needed to do, but they took a money box that was inside the ATM and fled. With the assistance of the Pennsylvania State Police, though, they were apprehended on the other side of Altoona and returned to us for us to be able to process them on, on the charges. A 23-year-old male was arrested for robbery of a motor vehicle following a carjacking incident on Byer Boulevard. The male attempted unsuccessfully at first, but then was able to successfully forcibly remove an individual from their vehicle and sped off in that stolen vehicle. Didn't make it very far, the theft occurred on Byer Boulevard, and he crashed into two cars in the intersection of North Atherton Street and Byer Boulevard. Thankfully, nobody was injured, but the male fled that scene on foot and subsequently stole another vehicle on West Aaron Drive. Again, with the assistance of the Pennsylvania State Police, Spring Township Police, and State College Police, we were able to apprehend that male and charge him with the appropriate crimes. We had a 22-year-old male who was arrested for rape, sexual assault, and aggravated indecent assault. The male held a knife to his victim's chest when he raped her, and he had also, also sexually assaulted her a few days prior to her reporting the rape incident. We had a 31-year-old male who was arrested for robbery of a motor vehicle, resisting arrest, and possessing marijuana. Officers were dispatched to a suspicious, suspicious person call, and when they arrived, they found a male who appeared to be intoxicated. That male refused to comply with our officers' requests, including trying to keep his hands where they could see them. requests, including trying to keep his hands where they could see them. The, he physically attempted to break out a car window of a parked car. This led to a short foot pursuit, where officers attempted to use a taser to subdue the male, but it was unsuccessful. A lot of times, people thinks that we deploy the taser, immediately the person will fall to the ground, we'll be able to take them into custody, and that's not always the case, as both probes actually did strike this individual. The male then entered a parked Ferguson Township Police Department cruiser, as a couple of their units had come up to help us out, to try to take this gentleman into custody. He got into the passenger side of their vehicle, was able to slide across to the driver's side and get the vehicle into gear. It took three officers to struggle and attempt to get the male out of the police vehicle as it started to drift backwards. One of our officers then did successfully taser, a taser deployment, which we were able to then finally safely remove him from the vehicle and get him into custody without any further incident, and without any injuries to any of the officers. We had a twenty-three-year-old male was arrested for kidnapping, false imprisonment, aggravated assault, simple assault, endangering the welfare of another person. The male was threatening a female with firearms and physically assaulting her. He'd basically been menacing her for, for about a month or so. He also fired one of his weapons inside the residence multiple times to intimidate the victim. And our officers, we'll get to in a minute, but did a fantastic job serving search warrants and collecting evidence to corroborate the victim's story as she had fled from the scene to report this, this to us. We had two individuals who were arrested for retail theft, two for DUI, and our officers successfully served five of the eighteen warrants they attempted in July. Something different, I'm kind of adding this in now for the board, and just for, again, some more transparency from our agency, I figured I'd add in a section for use of force. So each month, I'll report to the board and let you know if we have any use of force incidents in that month. And in July, we've already discussed them, but we have two. Again, we had the officer who deployed a taser two times while trying to apprehend the individual who was resisting arrest and attempting to steal a police vehicle. And then in relation to the kidnapping incident, we had two officers who pointed their duty weapons at that individual as they were taking him into custody for the felony offenses, including the firing of the weapon within his residence, so to make sure that we could safely get him into custody, which luckily everything went very smoothly, and we were able to do so without incident. Communications, Officer Sunderland conducted a few car seat safety checks for us. And then in the training and department activities, still due to COVID, we're very limited in what training we can do, and what, what classes are available or offered to us. We did send Officer Basala and Officer Bardzel to on-scene collision investigation level two, which is a two-week class offered by the Pennsylvania State Police in Meadville, Pennsylvania. We have Officer Shoemaker, who's retiring in December, and Officer Swindell, who's going to retire next March. I'm sorry, not next March, the following March, but there are two accident reconstructionists. So we're getting Officer Basala and Officer Bardzel trained up to be able to, to step into that role when those officers retire. All of our officers did attend, though, our eight hours of mandatory range in July. They were, went through their training and their annual qualifications with all the weapons that we carry, including our Leslie for Beanbag Gun. And Sergeant Chapenko also conducted an annual review of our deadly force and use of force policies at that training. And I attended a CCU meeting on the twenty-seventh and the Mental Health Task Force meeting on the twenty-eighth. At this point right now, with the Mental Health Task Force, just to give you a quick update, looks like we're going to be to the point where we'll have our findings released to the public, hopefully by this November is the target date for that. The next few pages are some, some letters that we've received from the public, showing some support for the police department. One in particular, I believe it's on the second page, is one I'm going to discuss here in just one second, regards to our officers doing CPR on an individual who was involved in a car accident. So we can scroll down to the first performance report. It's two Officer Sunderland, however, it was four Officer Sunderland, Officer McMorat, and Sergeant Albright, who responded to a traffic motor vehicle crash on Collinade Way, where a vehicle had gone into a retaining wall. When they got on scene, they determined that the officer, or I'm sorry, that the driver was in cardiac arrest and was not breathing. Two passer-bys had already started CPR, but Officer Sunderland was able to attach the AED to the patient, and it delivered two shocks. The other officers worked on getting oxygen and helping out with chest compressions. And happy to report, after several minutes of CPR, the patient actually regained a pulse and began breathing while we were still on scene. So it was fantastic teamwork, but due to the quick actions that the gentleman who was involved in this incident was able to be taken to advanced, advanced care at the hospital, and came by a couple of days later and thanked us for, for doing a fantastic job and, and for saving his life. His, his email that he sent directly to me follows there, showing his gratitude and appreciation to the officers who were there that day. The next performance report we have was for Officer Brad Tuskovich. He actually assisted on July twenty-fourth in Ferguson Township at one of their residences for a cardiac arrest call. He was the first officer on scene and found a patient not breathing and had no pulse, so he began CPR. Ferguson Township arrived with their AED and did shock that, that patient three times. That patient, again, regained a pulse and was able to breathe on her own. He transported him to Mountain E. Medical Care for more, for more advanced care. So just really a testament to the officers, to the training they receive, the first aid, CPR, and first responder, but also the equipment that the township provides us, the AEDs are absolutely vital for us to have out in the cars. To, to shock somebody quickly after their heart stops is, is actually absolutely vital. So we appreciate the fact that we have the, the equipment we need in our vehicles. Detective Hawes received one as well. His was involving an investigation. We had a lot of these for fraudulent gift cards and debit cards. We had some individuals who came into some local businesses and presented some, some fraudulent cards. Our patrol officers seized the cars, but they didn't have enough probable cause to arrest at that point. But Detective Hawes did a fantastic job of researching the methods that the suspects used, and was able to track the sale of gift cards to some other, other states out in the western part of our country. And he was able to contact those locations, determine the suspects had obtained them fraudulently, and was able to ultimately charge the suspects with, by deception or receiving stolen property. The next one was for Officer Snyder. He actually was the detective who investigated the rape case, but it was due to his professional response that a serious crime was thoroughly investigated and a dangerous individual was charged. And then, I believe lastly here, we had, was for a multitude of officers, again, involved in the kidnapping incident. This, again, you know, a young lady contacted us, said she had fled the scene, gave us some information. Our officers conducted a search warrant, again, very meticulously went through the, the apartment. One of our crime scene officers was there, was able to locate a lot of evidence that helped corroborate, again, the story and help us to, to eventually charge the individual that was at the scene there. Our record, record list for, for calls, in the month of July, we had three hundred and eighty-three, which is getting us back to where we're normally at. We had a little bit of a dip during COVID, but we're back, kind of seeing numbers where a little bit more normal for this time of year. Down a little bit from the three ninety-five that we had in June, but the most, most responded to calls are going with health and safeties. Second most were traffics. And I did get a question from Ms. Robb, I should have probably answered this in a previous one, but just to let you know, dispatch error is one thing that she had brought up, that she saw. Generally, that means that our officers were accidentally dropped onto a call. That's something that's not in our jurisdiction. So that happens sometimes frequently between, right on the border of Patton and Ferguson, where we will get dispatched to a Ferguson call accidentally, and that's, that's what the dispatch error means when you see that under the comments. And just lastly, the only other thing I was going to mention was, our officers are doing the Walmart checks on the containers that are down there, and at this point, we have not seen any violations. They seem to be in compliance with the conditions that was issued and the permit issued by the board. So I have nothing else to report at this point.
Thank you, Chief. I actually appreciate that you're including copies of the performance reports on, on some of these officers. That's, I think, very helpful for us to get more detailed information about specific calls and, and the excellent work that your police force is, is doing. Any comments from the board or questions from the board? Yes, Pam?
Yes, Pam.
To Chief, thank you for answering my question. The other question that I asked Chief was on the report was due to fire, fireworks that were set off around eleven, eleven PM at night. I have several complaints from neighbors that was wondering where, where it came from. And Chief was kind enough to give me information on the, let me get this right, noise ordinance, which is states that they can use the fireworks up until eleven PM. I would like to see that revisited to at least ten, ten PM. I'm looking at parents with young children, I'm looking at seniors that go to bed, you know, between nine-thirty and ten. I'm looking at veterans, combat veterans.
Not go down to, all the way to Ferguson to catch the new shared use path.
Yes, Doug Erickson. We, we do have a, a next project planned to make connections from that shared use path into Park Forest. Because of the way the grant funding was structured, we can't start doing this work until the current work gets finished. State regulations, let me just put it that way. So it's, we're, we will be working towards getting that started as, like, in November of this year, as soon as the project ends up. And we're looking at establishing crossing locations. I think Devonshire, Oakley, we'll look at the possibility of doing something where Douglas Drive dead ends currently. The school district's working on something at Little Lion Drive. So we will be looking at those issues starting in November and continuing on through next year.
Very good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, one other comment. So thank you, Anita, I was going to mention that. If you could, Doug, if you could also look into the crossing at Sandy Ridge Road and the
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I forgot that one.
Yeah, that's actually a real popular one. And we had the, the open house on the widening of the road. We get, did get a number of comments of people requesting a crosswalk sign, a flashing, flashing light, flashing beacon.
Yeah, we'll look into all those issues and we'll be bringing that. Again, we, as in, at the end of Douglas Drive, we don't have it right away for those connections. So there and at Sandy Ridge, we'll have to look at working to obtain right away for those, those connections.
Okay, great, thank you.
But that's all part of that project. I just, no, you know, thank Ms. Castuccini for the work she's done. We'll take a look at what we can do along there. I think we're going to find, trying to get the speeds down is going to be very, very difficult, but I think Alexander has identified that distracted drivers are probably an issue around there, and we'll see what we can do to keep people's attention back on the road.
I'd like to ask if you have follow-up data on the, on Circleville Road, you put in those speed bars, I don't remember what you called them?
That's the next item, I think.
Oh, you're, you're going to talk about that next.
Segue right in, if you'd like.
Okay. Go ahead and talk about that, please.
Okay. So since the last meeting, public, public works staff has installed the optical speed bars on Circleville Road, and collected data for three weeks. And unfortunately, it did not reduce the speed, the eighty-five percentile speed on Circleville Road. I sent a letter out to the residents also informing them of that, and that I would look into other options for traffic calming in that area.
I have a personal observation to pass on. I noticed, because I use that road quite frequently, whenever the sun is out, when it's sunny, and you have a lot of dapple shade and sun on the roadway, you really, the, those speed bars are, are, are not really observable. You can't really tell they're there. But on a cloudy day or at night, yes, they're, they're there. Personally, I noticed that it didn't affect my, my own driving. I'm not speeding on there anyway, but it didn't make me slow down.
Sure you are.
So I'm a little disappointed that such a simple, cost-effective potential solution is not proving effective in that particular setting.
Yes, I forgot to add that I coordinated with Chief Jolly, and over the last few weeks, they stopped eleven motorists and did six citations in that area.
Wow.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we can move on to the next one?
Elliot has a comment.
Oh, Elliot, go ahead, I didn't see your hand.
No, I, I actually think it, it's working, just I agree. I noticed them, and I maybe go a couple, five miles an hour or less, and I don't, I don't see as much speeding. So I might want to, have we asked the residents there if they've noticed any reduction?
I haven't contacted anybody there, but I can certainly try to get in touch with some people.
Maybe I'm totally wrong, it seems that way.
Other people have said the same thing to me, that they've slowed down through there, but the data did not support that, so.
Any, any of the traffic counts, though, that we've been doing the last couple of months, probably isn't representative of what it's usually like around the year on, on almost any road.
Yeah, that's true. And with COVID, I'm not sure if COVID has changed driver behavior. Still working on getting some data on that, so.
Any other board comments? We have no citizen comments, do we? No, okay. Moving on to the next one, rectangular rapid flashing beacon at Toth Trees and President's Drive.
The flashing beacon, the two corners are installed, and tomorrow, we're planning on wrapping up the entire installation. So that's the update there.
Is there a plan for doing more traffic study there, follow-up to see if it's effective in reducing average speed?
Yeah, we have signs out there right now that are collecting data, so we should, we can get information on that.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none. Next one is rectangular rapid flashing beacon on Little Lion Drive.
Yeah, this is a State College Area School District project that's being funded by a, a red light enforcement grant. They were supposed to let the bid at their meeting on Monday night, I don't know exactly what happened, but they're trying to get that done. So, and if they let the bid, the work should be done by this fall.
Okay, moving on to update on the shared, Valley Vista Drive shared use path.
Yeah, I will, I, I think everybody who drives down Valley Vista has been watching that very closely. The contractor has picked up their pace quite a bit in the last week, and I've noticed that, starting yesterday or Monday, there is a second crew out there now. So they've said they had a plan to finish on time, it looks like they're, they're good to their words now. They got across, they're, they're doing, they're grading the paths and putting down the gravel sub base. They're past Sandy Ridge Drive now, and heading downhill towards Ferguson Township. Project will be complete. Right now, it's currently October eleventh, the completion date, but they could ask for some extension due to COVID, which would drag us into November, but we will be done this year.
Okay. Comments or questions? Not seeing any, go ahead to the next item, street overlays?
Well, Fox Hill Burnell Road, just give you, that work is supposed to start very, very shortly.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then we'll let Steve do, Steve, you want to do the twenty-twenty street overlays?
Uh, sure. The, so they're, they're projected to start here tomorrow, actually, doing the street overlays on Greywoods Boulevard, and hopefully getting that done before school starts there for those, because they will be actually closing a whole lane down while they do the work. And then they will be doing Valley Vista later on. Hopefully, the idea there is when the path project moves beyond the part that they're actually going to overlay. But yeah, that's where those are. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, go on, please. Next item, planning and zoning. Planning Commission Report, Nicole Pollak.
Hello, everyone. So two main things to talk about from Hello, everyone. Uh, so two main things to talk about, um, from the Planning Commission that won't be on the consent agenda. Uh, as you all know, we're looking at affordable housing. So our last meeting was centered mostly around the idea of putting duplexes in the R2 or that lots that are 18,000 square feet or larger that are connected to public sewer could be eligible to do so. Um, and I have written up a report that is attached with the agenda, kind of giving some of the facts and highlights to that idea. So if anybody has any questions about that, I can answer them. Um, and we are looking at two other addressing affordable housing that we will be talking about again at our September 14th meeting, along with potentially the duplex conversation could continue. And that would be adding the MXD2 overlay to the other C2 properties and looking at different ways to get inclusionary zoning. And we've been looking at municipalities in the center region, as well as some things happening nationally to see if we can't get something that will work for patent township. And then also, we are trying to get a plan together for a trail connection from the Burnell Road, kind of planned airport district area into the Toth Trees community. So we are talking with Penn State and other stakeholders and property owners in the area to see if we can't map out a route to get a potential trail connection there. Any questions? Anyone want some additional information?
Let me make a comment, a preliminary comment, because I know that there were multiple citizens comments at the Planning Commission meeting about this, uh, possibility of changing the R2 zone to allow duplexes. There was quite a bit of email from residents. I think we have a resident here also who wants to speak on this. So just for a couple of things first, before we have a discussion. One, this topic for figuring out possibilities for increasing workforce housing. We're talking about workforce housing. We're not talking about low income. We're talking about workforce housing. So families with median incomes, uh, plus or minus 20%. The, the issue that the board is very concerned about is there are many professionals, like teachers, uh, can't afford to live in our community. It's too expensive. And so many of them are living outside the area and commuting in to their, to their jobs. So, uh, we, board supervisors asked the Planning Commission to take a look at multiple, to see if they come up with multiple ways that we can try to, uh, address this issue, increase the amount of workforce housing. So this is just, this R2 zoning change was just one of the possibilities that was raised, uh, for discussion. I'm going to ask the board of supervisors to make their comments on this and then we'll open it up for citizen comments after that. So board of supervisors, any of you wish to speak about this now? Looking for hands.
Betsy Whitman and Elliot.
Oh. Betsy Whitman, go ahead.
Sure. I just want to, um, reiterate what I said at the Planning Commission when they, when they met last. Uh, the commending the Planning Commission for the amount of research, time, effort they put into this, as well as commend Nicole Pollak for her guidance and research. She's the one who gathered the information and shared it with the Planning Commission. It's a very tough issue. I second everything that Dan Trevino just said about, uh, the boards. Certainly my desire to, uh, help patent township and, uh, in a perfect world beyond the whole center region, to find, um, work, workforce, workforce hous- housing. That's a mouthful. So thank you again to the Planning Commission. And I would also like to thank the many citizens who have written in with their concerns. This is what makes a community a, a good working community. So thank you for all of your responses, outreach.
Elliot, I think you had your hand raised. Go ahead. Elliot.
I like this work too. One of the things with duplexes, when I first saw it, I thought, what's wrong with that? But the letter writer pointed out that it could open the way to abuse, that, uh, you wind up with a lot of duplexes and, and much higher density than we intended. And it would necessarily not, it wouldn't necessarily be any less expensive. And that the area residents are much opposed to it. And so I think we should, uh, listen to them.
Yeah, we are listening to them. Any other, Pam, did you have anything you wanted to say? Or Anita?
I agree, I agree with Betsy. And I, I think we just need to do a little more research on this. And I truly want to thank Nicole and her staff for the work they've already done. And, um, I also understand and I, I'm listening to our residents and their comments to this board on exactly, um, what their concerns, issues are of the abuse. And, um, I'm, I'm in, forward to whatever this board decides.
Thank you. Anita?
Yes. I too appreciate all the energy that Nicole has put into this and just giving us the factual summary of what the Planning Commission was thinking about with the amendment to the zoning. I appreciate too, all of the resident involvement in the many letters. I've heard both sides from it. I've also heard from people who see potential in this. But I think we are at the very beginning stages of a discussion. And, uh, I'm looking forward as months go on to having this continuing focus on how we can find ways to bring in the kind of community that some people now are shut out from. I was able to sit in on a Zoom call this afternoon with the Center County Affordable Housing Coalition and the work that is going on there. So I'm seeing potential in coming months to learn more myself and to welcome the voices of the community on all sides. But again, I think this is very much at a beginning stage. And I thank Nicole for her report and for the Planning Commission for opening up the discussion at an early stage. As we all know, I was involved with the Patent Crossing Citizens Advisory Committee. And in that case, the concern was that it had not been opened up early enough. And in this case, it's certainly been opened up early and will continue down the line to, I think, have additional conversations. I think those conversations are well worth having. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll just add, oh, Elliot, go ahead. Do you have a follow-up?
One other thing is that our two newest board members, Anita and Pam, I think they're, they're not going to let anything like this go by. And they see both sides of this, so that, uh, I think when, that will wind up as a positive thing. And, um, I really appreciate their input.
Thanks. Uh, also, my, my view is, just to reiterate, this is, this is very preliminary. This is very initial. We, we, the Planning Commission is doing what we asked them to do, explore all options. And this just happened to be one possibility of multiple options. And as you heard from Nicole Pollak, the Planning Commission will be continuing their discussion of a variety of different other kinds of options. My view is, given, given the amount of public input we got on this particular proposal about changing the R2 zoning to allow duplexes, it seems to me that this is not a time to move forward, this particular kind of a proposal. Let's listen, let's wait till we get everything, all the other options, uh, explored, and then look collectively of all these different possibilities. So, um, I would, I would say, and I'll ask if the rest of the board agrees with me, if we could direct the Planning Commission to table any more discussion or consideration of changing the R2 zone to allow duplexes and, and ask them to move forward with other, other options. Now, I'll open it up to citizen comments. We have two here. I believe both of you want to speak. If one of you would come up and identify yourself.
Good afternoon, or evening as it is now. My name's Keith Brodigan and I live in the Park Forest neighborhood. And I, um, very much appreciate the early engagement that was mentioned. Affordable housing is a real concern for all of us. And I do hope that the overwhelming community feedback that was opposed to this specific proposal isn't mischaracterized as people like myself not being interested in doing something about affordable housing. We just felt very strongly that this specific proposal does not achieve that and in fact has some negative consequences that we had hoped honestly would have been included in the informational update provided to the board. I don't know that I need to go into a lot of details. Um, I think you've had, heard a lot of the feedback and hopefully have read letters that concerned citizens have submitted to you. So I'd, I'd hold further comment for myself until, um, I hear how the board would like to proceed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Would you like to address it?
Hello. Uh, my name's Peter Sharp. I live in Park Forest Village as well. Um, and I think I just want to second what, uh, my neighbor up the street, Keith, already said. Uh, we like, we appreciate and understand this idea and we are very sympathetic to it. I think at this time, uh, we, this specific idea, we don't support. However, I am certainly open to seeing what the other ideas and options are that Nicole's come up with and having a dialogue as we move forward to see what those might be. I know that as one of my critiques of the summary, uh, and I sent a letter, I'm one of the gentlemen who sent a letter to you and the other supervisors, was that there was a lot of, uh, feedback solicited by the Planning Commission for alternative ideas. And I know personally, I submitted feedback in written form and during the chat, in the chat window of that meeting. I did not see that reflected in the summary. And I think that I'm just one person. And so moving forward, it would be nice if my ideas or the ideas of other members of the public or Nicole's ideas beyond this one, uh, we'd be open to exploring and, and talking about. So thank you for your time and consideration. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I will, uh, also say that the, uh, the, the comments provided at the meeting are going to be incorporated into the minutes of the Planning Commission, which the minutes are, I'm not sure how quickly they are prepared, but they certainly will become part of the, uh, attachments to the agenda of the next Planning Commission meeting in Sep- September. So the, all those comments, uh, should be included and, and part of the public record. The summary that, that, uh, that the planner, Nicole, provided us was, was simply a bullet points about, well, this topic was discussed, this topic was discussed. It is not intended to be a detailed, um, minutes. So we, we, I read your comment, I read all the citizens' comments that were sent to us individually. I read through some of the, the, um, the threads from those, those comments, back and forth, especially to the ones to Anita. We're, we're very open. We want your, your input. We solicit your input. We want your input. You'll have ample opportunity to continue to give us your input. And I assure you that your suggestions are, were heard by the members of the Planning Commission. And I know two of the supervisors were also on that Zoom session with the Planning Commission, uh, Betsy Whitman and Anita Tiesworth. So they heard all your suggestions and comments. So we're, we're aware of those and we appreciate them. So we, we don't want to discourage any input that you want to give us. And I'm sorry that, that you felt they were not given due consideration because they weren't summari- or given, uh, mentioned in, in the, in the summary. But certainly assure you, we're, we're taking into, taking them into full consideration. And as I said earlier, this is just the beginning stages of this whole discussion. We're, we hope that, that the, there's continuing discussion at more at a county-wide level or center-region-wide level certainly about overall, uh, possibilities and options for increasing affordable housing. It's not just a patent township issue. It's a center-region issue. So we intend to do that. Go ahead.
Can I ask you one more?
Yeah, come back up here. So. Sure.
Excuse me, everyone. I had one other, uh, point I wanted to make. I'm also in government and I'm also in a position similar to probably the folks over here on this table where I have to advise folks such as yourselves and the board members here about actions to take. And one thing that would help me out as a concerned citizen and someone who is eager to help and assist in this process, and it's probably in the minutes somewhere, and I, pardon me if I missed it, uh, is what is the, what is the end goal? Uh, how many affordable or middle-income housing units do we want? I think if citizens like myself or, or Keith or anyone else that wants to participate in this process understands exactly what the township supervisors want out of middle-income housing, like is it 79 affordable units in Park Forest Village or whatever that number is, that will help us, uh, come up with creative ideas and solutions. That's the only other thing I wanted to say, that I didn't see anywhere in past minutes or at the Planning Commission meeting is what's the goal? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't think there is a numerical goal that was discussed or talked about. Betsy Whitman, do you, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, thanks. Yes, thanks for your concern about, um, wanting a concrete picture. Uh, we would all like a concrete picture. Just to give you a little bit of the history in the, uh, decision to look at affordable housing options, when we went through the planning stages for Patent Crossing, that's that development across from Walmart, the, um, mixed, mixed-use community, the, uh, we had spent quite a bit of time listening to citizens. Uh, we actually formed a citizens advisory group. You probably remember this. And, um, the, we had the develop, I'm trying to show you visuals. Developers and the citizens, um, I'm sorry, the citizens advisory developers and staff came to the table, um, you know, beginning at distant ends and, and coming a little bit closer. The supervisors closed the gap. We had a public hearing. In all of these discussions where we went from here to here in terms of setbacks and height of building, we, we, always in the, um, on the table was a, an offer by the developers of Patent Crossing to include 5% affordable housing. When we had our public hearing, which was in such great demand that we had it at the Mount Nittany Middle, or Park Forest Middle School, we were all, um, almost kind of, I was certainly bowled over by the number of responses from people in the audience on affordable housing. So they felt that the 5% wasn't enough. And we had many sort of, we had people who were involved directly in affordable housing professionally or as, um, uh, not advisors, advocates. And we had a, a couple of very personal stories. So, um, we actually, uh, based on those comments, and it was about 50/50, people who talked about, um, it was sort of against, um, reasons against Patent Crossing and people who talked for affordable housing and wanting more of it. We denied the approval on that, which is very unusual, actually, in a public hearing, uh, because you've dotted i's and crossed t's by the time you've gotten to that point. And, um, we went back to And we went back to the board with the, the bargaining table, conversation with developers, they increased it to 10%, up to 10% affordable housing. What that did, however, for all of us on the board, was raise a very stark awareness of the desire, the need for more workforce, workforce housing in the area. So that, though we don't have a specific goal, number in mind, which would help all of us, we, we come by this from very, historically, and very direct input from the public. I hope that helps answer some of your questions, gives it a little bit of perspective.
Can I say something else?
Yeah, please come up here for, for seeing it. Thank you.
Betsy, thank you so much, and I'm sorry to keep saying stuff, but I would say that's step one is, we need the, you, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your business, but if I were trying to manage the planning commission, I would say step one is, we need a goal. So whatever that number is, we need to start with that so that if you're going to come up with some sort of a solution, it makes some sort of a sense, and then you even have some metrics by which you can gauge your success or not of this new initiative. So that's the only other thing I would suggest doing. Thank you again.
We'll pass that back on to the planning commission. Ms. Pollack is on the session, obviously, so she can take note of that and pass that back as, as a comment. Elliot, you have your hand up? Go ahead.
Yeah. I like that idea of looking at goals. At our Zoom Rotary Meeting last night, we were deciding how to allocate grants to different community agencies, and each one had its own goals. For example, somebody, one group was feeding people, and they were looking to find a way of getting 50 turkeys before Thanksgiving. And each person, each, each applicant came up with goals. Now, it's harder to do that, I guess, with housing. But if you know, you don't know what you're shooting for if you don't have a goal or know where the target is.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Don't see any hands. Let me ask the board, I made a suggestion that we also pass on to the planning commission a, that they just table any further discussion of this duplexes and, and R2 zones and continue with their examination of other alternatives. Is there any disagreement from the board?
No, you're right.
No, no disagreement. So Nicole Pollack has made note of that as well. Okay, any other?
I have one other question. A citizen reached out to me wondering when the results of the survey would be made available, and my assumption is that those will be included with the planning commission report.
Yep, I will include that with the next planning commission agenda for the September 14th meeting.
Perfect. And I just wanted to, I promised I would ask that, wanted to make sure. Thank you so much, Nicole.
Sure.
All right, if anybody would like those survey results, they can email Nicole and she can send them to you too.
Yep, I have been giving anyone who asks a copy of the final results. So if you don't want to wait, you can ask.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
If I could just say, to having, having read all the comments on the survey results, I think it's very encouraging the amount of thought that the residents have given, especially when they were asked what ideas they had for affordable housing. There are very many, very thoughtful suggestions that will take time to think about and digest, but the degree of citizen involvement, to me, was just very encouraging. And so, thank you.
Okay. I think that we'll end our discussion on, on this topic. And I'm requesting, or not requesting, I'm the chair, I am declaring a five-minute recess. So we'll resume in five minutes.
Thank you.
So much for our five-minute break.
Where's he work?
I think he works.
Number's back. All right. I'll call this meeting back to order. Research is over. Next item on the agenda is administration, mid-year financial report and COVID-19 financial update. Mr. Peggert?
Yes, good evening. Could everybody hear me? I hope.
Yes.
For the new members, this first report is a mid-year review of our revenue and expenditures, where I take the revenue and expenditures as of the end of June, on June 30th, and I do some analytical review on that to estimate what it's going to be for the year and find if there's any major problems. Currently, you know, we're doing, we're doing pretty okay considering the circumstances. But, you know, with the main concern being, as I've mentioned in the past, the earned income tax, which I think is going to continue to be a, an issue as the year goes on. For revenues, as I stated in my memo, the earned income tax are tracking at about 8% below budget. And that was as of, you know, the, as of Monday. Late Monday afternoon, I got some more information, I got the information regarding the second quarter, that was to come in at the, at mid-August, so it came in late Monday afternoon, early Tuesday, and earned income taxes now tracking at about 10% below budget. With no football, some of the students not coming back. For instance, my grandson who's got all online classes, is planning on not coming back to State College, he'll be doing his schooling from home. I expect that we're going to see earned income tax continue to track below budget. And hopefully, you know, not much more than we're seeing now. The second point was the police program reimbursements are definitely tracking less than budget. That mainly deals with, in those reimbursements, we get reimbursed from the school district, State College School District, for the school resource officer. Obviously, we haven't been getting that since the schools were closed in March, April, and May. Now with school reopening, we should start seeing that coming back. Also, you know, in that, is going to be any reimbursements we get for football? So losing the blue-white game, we didn't have any, any reimbursements for that. And losing this football season, you know, we won't have any reimbursements for that. On the opposite side of that, on the expenditure side of that, we're not going to see any expenses going on for the football games again. And the third point, which is a good point, is our health insurance refund amounted to $213,000 over budget, so we're receiving $213,000 more than we budgeted for. Just to give you a reminder of how this works is, we pay Benicon, which is our consortium for health insurance, we pay them based on an actuarial amount, how much they think our health insurance is going to cost. We are self-insured, so we pay exactly the amount that is charged by the healthcare providers, by the doctors' offices, and by the hospitals, et cetera. Then at the end of the year, they, they do a reconciliation of what they estimated with the actuarial and what we actually did. And if we paid more in than our actual expenses were, we get a refund. If we paid less in than our actual expenses, we don't have to pay extra, it's covered by all the other members of the consortium. So that's the revenue side. The expenditure side, I, I looked at those, and our main areas are, our salaries and benefits are below budget in all departments, but that's mainly due to the fact that we reclassed our salary and benefits during the shutdown of the office to the COVID-19 account, which is my second point, which is the COVID-19 expenditures are estimated to be approximately for the year $300,000, but they'll be offset by the decrease in the salaries and benefits for the most part. In total, our expenditures are expected to be about 3% less than what we budgeted. So we're, we're making some adjustments where we, we held off on hiring the extra police officer that was in the budget. We haven't hired the communications director that was in the budget as of yet, so we'll have some savings there. We'll also have some savings because we, we delayed some of our construction projects. So that will help us to remain, our expenditures to remain under budget. So overall, the financial position appears to be on target for 2020. So I will take any questions if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? I can't see any of the, oh, here we go. Anita, go ahead, Anita.
Is there a time sense of when we might know if we'll have enough money in the budget to proceed with the hiring of the second police officer? I personally think that's a, a good priority. And at what point in this year might you have a sense of our feasibility of being able to proceed with that second hiring?
So we're looking at it, I'm looking at the numbers on a month-to-month basis and, and monitoring them. The, the extra police officer is going to cost us, you know, around $150,000 for their wages and their uniforms and their benefits and everything like that. So if we, you know, we can always look at, look closer at the projects, to hold up the projects if we feel that, that that police officer is definitely necessary. The police officer we are hiring to replace Officer Shoemaker when he retires, that police officer is being hired. That is not the police officer I'm talking about. There was an extra, there was a second police officer that was in the budget, an extra police officer that was in the budget, that we've actually, at this point in time, have postponed it to 2021, if you know better. But we can always relook at that at any time, at the end of any month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the supervisors? Is that Betsy? Yes, Betsy.
Thank you. Larry, I apologize if you've explained this before, but can you give some detail on the COVID-19 expenditures?
Oh, yeah. So I didn't know whether it was later in the meeting where, but, but currently, we have, we have about $150,000 in the COVID expenditures. And that includes the, we had closed the office down, we had sent people home, however, we continued to pay them their full salary. So I took their expenses, the vast, vast majority of that amount in that account, is I took that payroll and I reclassed it into COVID-19 with the thought of maybe in the future, somebody like the federal government would pay us future, somebody like the federal government would pay us back for that body because we was, we were nice enough to not furlough people. Our, you know, we'd be able to, definitely will be able to, in our workers' comp audit, to take the, the public works crew, the road crew, which is at a higher workers' comp rate than the office, and be able to save some money in workers' comp insurance next year because those people were not working on the road.
Thank you. You jogged my memory, and I'm very proud that we were able, Patent Township was able to set up a fund that would keep our employees paid. Thank you.
I'm very proud of that, too.
Let me follow up.
Good idea.
Larry, let, let me follow up with that because Doug just sent us a copy of a letter from the county.
Yes.
That the county has allocated funds to reimburse municipalities, and our, our allotment was $156,000. So, more or less, the, so are these COVID employee, employee expenses going to qualify for that reimbursement from the county?
Go ahead, Larry.
So that is, that is up in the air. So I have been researching that for a good part today to determine if we, if we are able to use it. First of all, definitely cannot use it for any non-uniform employee. It's, it's definitely states, the, the amount that comes from the county comes through the state, through the county, to the municipalities as a result of the CARES Act. The CARES Act specifically has inclusions and exclusions of what you can spend the CARES Act money on. And the payroll for non-uniform employees is definitely excluded.
Okay.
A big question is whether we can apply it to any payroll for the uniform employees. It does talk about public safety employees and whether they're eligible or not. It also is eligible for monies that you incurred that were not budgeted as of your last approved budget, which ours would have been approved at December 31st. So there are some expenses that, that, some small expenses that definitely will be able to cover, be covered in that. However, I don't see that it's going to cover any non-uniform employee wages at this point. So it is not similar to the payroll protection plan number, amount, or monies that you had seen come out of CARE Act for small businesses and, and nonprofits, where they were able to use that money to pay their employees to keep them on the payroll, which is exactly what we did. We paid the employees to keep them on the payroll. They don't have anything like that for local governments at this point.
Thank you, Larry. Any other questions for Larry? If not, please move on to the financial trends monitoring.
Okay, so the financial trends monitoring report, again, for, for those of you new to the, to the board, this is a, a report that we do annually that, that looks at 10 years' worth of information for trends. Financial trends populate, population trends, trends within our financial system to try to determine if we have any warning trends or any, or where we're favorable trends, stable trends or warning trends. So I just, you have a copy of the entire report. I just did a PowerPoint that just talks about what I think are probably the most important points of, of the report. And the first one is, I always like to look at the population. So our population, what they do is, we have the census as of 2010. At this point, the census for 2020 is still on, under, is still ongoing. So every year, based on the census of 2010, there's an estimate that the Census Bureau does for Patent Township, and that estimate for 2019 was $15,905. Think if you read the report, we were about $15,300 in 2010. So we're, we're, we're remaining pretty close to $16,000 for the past three years. So I think that that's, that's pretty favorable for us. The next slide deals with our population. Our population remains pretty stable from year to year as far as the age of the population. A good portion of our population is under 65, which helps us as far as earned income tax goes, and that remains to be in a favorable position for us. The sources of revenue, comparing 2009 to 2019, it's, it's pretty stable. Real estate taxes continue to be our largest revenue generator, with earned income tax being our second largest. The other percentages move around and, and depend on, you know, what happens. Like in 2019, we had $800,000 come through in a multimodal grant that increased the intergovernmental revenue to 19%, which then would affect all the others, as the pie cannot be more than 100%. The next, the next graph shows a little bit different, all the years going from 2009 to 2019. And you can see our real estate taxes remained relatively stable, our earned income taxes remained stable. The big numbers that jumped are, are other taxes in 2016, which was a big year for real, real estate transfer tax. And basically, after that would be the intergovernmental revenue, which could vary from year to year. And also in 2017 was the year we refinanced our debt, so our non-tax sources were, were a lot higher. The next one is the comparison of the revenues and expenditures. This just shows that, and this is in nominal dollars and current dollars and, and adjusted for inflation dollars. And this just basically shows that in most years, our expenditures are, our expenditures are in line with our revenues. In the past couple of years, 2018, 2019, we have been trying to reduce our fund balance to keep it in line with our fund balance policy. So the expenditures are higher in those two years, but in the other years, they were pretty close. Expenditures by, by function, which is the next one, is pretty stable. You can see from year to year where, as a percentage, the debt was really high, as I said, in 2017 due to us refinancing the debt. It was also high in 2016 because we made some payments on the debt to get ready. But overall, pretty stable in the breakdown of the expenditures. Here is our first warning trend, which is the next one, which is the benefits as a percentage of total wages. This has continually gone up, as it has continually gone up for everybody in the country. A good view, though I want to see, hopefully we'll see the second point to this when we look at this next year, but a good, a good point is that we had a decrease in 2019. That would coincide with our refund being very high, is that our, our healthcare expenses were low. Our actual healthcare expenses were low, so that helps out to keep the percentage, the benefits as a percentage of total wages down. Also, the market did really well in 2019, which helped us out with our pension plan. So hopefully, we see another year in 2020 with the decrease in benefits as a percent of wages, since we made some changes to the health insurance for 2020. The unfunded pension ratio continues to be very close to 100% funded. We're at 99.3% funded for at the end of 2019. So there's, there's no, that remains stable. The liquidity remains favorable, as is above zero. We have enough money to pay our bills. That number has dropped in 2018 to 2019 as a result of us trying to reduce the fund balance, as I talked before. The ratio of long-term debt to assessed values is now on a downward trend. Of course, in 2017, it jumped up because we refinanced the debt, borrowed the $3.5 million for open space. So now we'll see that trend start to go down as we did in 2010, the last time we refinanced. And the other warning trend, which was favorable in last year and now is, the warning trend, obviously, is the unemployment rate. The unemployment rate for June is now sitting at about 8.4% per center county, and, which is lower than, than the state overall, but still, we tend to run a lower rate in center county. But that is a warning trend for us because with the people being out of work, we know earned income tax and LST tax coming in from people who are unemployed. So that's the, the points I wanted to make on the financial trends. I will take any questions on those or any, or on the report in general.
Any questions from the board? I don't see any hands raised, so, thank you, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Next item, board input for the 2022-2024 CIP.
Yeah, the next, the next major financial planning tool that you will see come out, come before you will be the capital improvement plan. You'll see that in October. Our staff has already begun working on this. And this is the board's chance to let us know if you have any ideas. And Ms. Rob might have one, because she, we talked earlier this week about something.
Yes, Doug. I would like to bring to the board a suggestion or, for a walkway on Valley Vista from Carnegie, a walkway going down to Sheets. At the point that it wasn't developed, there wasn't a Sheets there. But now that there is a Sheets on the corner of Valley Vista and North Atherton, there is a walkway on the left side of Valley Vista and none on the right. So we're looking at, if possible, doing a walkway on the right side. And thank you to Betsy and Dan. I did walk down and saw the drop, the little path, and needs a lot of work. So thank you both for that information, and would like to move and see what we can do in the near future or in the future.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put together an estimate on that and include it in the capital improvement plan. As we noted before, everything goes into the first, the first version of it, and we see how much it's going to cost. And then if there's more than we can handle in the first year, we might have to make some changes, but that's what the, that's what the process is essentially about. So I will take care of that for you.
Thank you very much.
Any comments from the board about other suggestions to add to the CIP? Elliot, you have your hand raised?
This, this last suggestion is a sidewalk. I mean, that's just the kind of thing we should be doing, because we would have done it if we had that need, that that store had existed before, because you'd expect pedestrians. We didn't do it, and so this would be a kind of investment that probably would be worth it.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, seen none. Move on. Next item would be the CADA, Capital Local Match Plan. Doug?
Yeah, CADA has proposed a local match for their capital program for the next three or four years through '23, '24 on their agenda. They're provided a spreadsheet that looks at a local match for '21, '22 of 104,000 or, okay, 100,000 a year from the local partners that all provide match for three years, starting next year. I don't know if there's any more information really available or that we have it right at the moment. Can't, was this a COG item at one point, too?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I think there may have been a little more information involved with, with the general forum. And CADA is asking for essentially approval of this plan from each municipality. I'd ask that the board review the materials, solicit whatever input you think you might need, and consider action to approve.
Any comments from the board?
Doug, is there a deadline that they need this by?
That I do not know.
I assume we don't have any public input either on this item.
No. Check email quickly and see.
I would also add that there's, this is the amount they've been charging us for the past three years. There's no increase in the, in the capital.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I remember when, when other COG committee looked at it. I think the finance committee reviewed it, didn't we, Larry?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Yes, we did.
So there were, there were no, there were no problems, no criticisms, because it's consistent with what
Okay, thanks.
the matches have been in the past.
That's correct.
So can we vote on?
Yeah, I would ask that you consider, if you're ready to make a mo, to make, to consider action, that someone offer a motion.
I made a motion that we accept the CADA proposal?
Seconded.
Okay, Elliot seconded. So moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seen none, let's vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, no one opposed, so motion passes. Okay, next item is the Council of Governments 2021 Program Plan and Capital Improvement Plan.
I think Eric Norberg's with us. He was earlier. I had I had circulated a list of comments or questions that the council governments had posed on the program plan. I had provided some comments on several items. Supervisor Anita Tease provided some also. COG generally likes consensus, agree, consensus comments. Did not go through and see where we disagreed, but at this point, I've asked the board if they have any other comments and how they would like to proceed. And if Eric has any items he'd like to.
Joe Vigloni is also on. So Eric or Joe, do either of you want to add anything in it before we have our discussion?
Just thank you for welcoming us to your meeting tonight. We're happy to answer any questions that you have. But I know this is an important discussion for you all to, as Doug mentioned, to go through and come to agreement on the, the items where there's some questions that we posed in the comment guide. So Joe and I will be here as, as a resource if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, anybody have any questions or comments? I don't see any hands raised. I do. I didn't, I, I agree primarily with, with what Doug and Anita have already put into, in their boxes on, on comments. But in general, I feel that because of our current COVID pandemic and the, the severe economic, negative economic consequence of that, I personally just don't think this is the year to be adding any new programming, new items, new employees or anything like that because we're still not certain the degree to which our revenues are going to be impacted as, as you may have heard when Larry was talking about his summary. We, so that's just my general feeling. And if, I ask if the other board members agree, we can put in a little statement at the very beginning in the general non-funded specific comments that says something similar to this. And here I'm offering some wording. Because of the severe negative financial impact of the current COVID pandemic, now is not the time to be adding any new employees or programming. So I, I offer that to the board for discussion. Any comments or questions from the board?
Elliot has his hand up.
Elliot's waving his hand. Let's hear from Elliot, please.
I agree with you completely. And I was starting to think about that when we were talking about the Township's capital improvement plan. We really don't know how things are going to go over the next few years, how quickly a vaccine is going to come along, how, how quickly the university will return to where it was, who may it will. And so until those things are known, I don't think we should be outspending ourselves.
Okay, Anita, did you have a comment?
Yes, well, I agree with what you're proposing, Dan. And I agree with both Dan and Elliot, yes.
Okay, Pam or Betsy, do either of you have any comments?
Yes, I'm going back and forth here. Sorry, different things. I, I agree, yes, I agree about pulling the reins in on programs and hires. However, I'm also conflicted because I think the, the purpose of the program plan is to, you know, have that long-range view. And I'm, I'm forgetting how we prioritize once we have things listed in the program plan. So I apologize on that. So just because we have something in the program plan doesn't mean that we place a top priority on it. Am I correct on that or am I confusing this with something else?
Eric, do you want to respond?
Well, the, the finance committee will be meeting tomorrow and begin to discuss the feedback from the municipalities on the program plan and the capital improvement program. And that, that will be taken into consideration as Joe and I then work on the next steps of the budget. And I'll let Joe maybe run through the, the whole process because we do have some newer, newer board members and Joe can fill you in on the budget process.
Joe?
You got me at perfect time. I apologize. Moving around with some family things around in here right now. Right now, what the program plan is designed to do is to give staff input as to how we're going to put together the detailed budget. So the idea is we're asking for you whether a thumbs up or thumbs down on different, different items. And depending on you guys' answer and the finance committee's answer, then we determine whether or not to go forth with those and put them in the detailed budget or whether to remove them from the detailed budget based upon the priorities. Sometimes these are ideas and food for thoughts. And sometimes these are other items which may have come up that need to be addressed and that some of the differences between the shoulds and the notes. I think that's the best thing I can do for you right now. And I apologize for walking around while we were talking.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Pam, go ahead.
I'm in support of your, your comments and your research on this. So I'm with you.
Okay. I, I have one or two additional, more specific kinds of things on the CIP, the capital improvement plan proposal. I just note that, that expenditures like the fire truck, proposed expenditures, replacing a fire truck, purchasing some fleet vehicles, those had already been incorporated into the CIP previously and funds had been encumbered for those particular purchases. So I don't have any problem with going ahead with those because the money's already there. The only, the only concern I had was any proposal for a new initiative that I think, I just thought it was premature this year to be approving any new initiative for the 2021 year. And we'll have to see what, what the economic climate it looks like next year when we start thinking about the 2022 budget. And it may be fine and it could be that we could implement some of these new initiatives at that point. Any other questions or comments from the board? Yes, Elliot, go ahead.
As we evaluate this, I mean, what are the priorities? We want to give the most service to our citizens that we can. We want to try to maintain our staff even in the face of cutbacks as much as we can. And so let's look at the rest of it. What's, what's most important, that needs to be done right away? And what can wait a little bit? Because we may not have a choice of that later on. And until we actually know that, let's not get ahead. And that's the same thing I think that you were saying.
Okay.
I just wanted to agree with you.
So the finance committee is meeting tomorrow and I'll be there so I, I can pass on the board's opinion about that. Betsy, yes, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you. The extra staff, I believe there was some mention, Eric, that you had sought essentially somebody to attend committee meetings and take notes. Was that the part of the extra staff? Or is that a different item?
As part of the committee review, one of the things that had been identified was the, the amount of time taken to do minutes for the general forum, committee meetings, et cetera. And one option that had been initially proposed earlier this summer and was noted in the program plan was the idea of a recording secretary. The concept was to, to try that for a year, but not, not actually hire staff, maybe contract that out as a professional service. But seeing that that would be a lesser cost on an hourly basis than the professional staff like Joe and Becca and others that have to do minutes, we would be able to devote the professional time of, of some of the COGS staff to more important duties. Since the program plan was published, we have also been looking at other options that could come in less expensive, such as the, the idea of doing kind of summary minutes and then keeping recordings of meetings available for reference. So we've been exploring some, some options, but we are really cognizant of the, the concern that was expressed earlier about not adding staff. But as a result, we're trying to think about how do we stretch the, the resources that we have now so that, you know, we could free up a number of hours of Joe's time each month that he didn't have to do some, you know, work on the minutes.
Right.
If he could spend an hour or two on that instead of six or eight hours on minutes, that would benefit the COG and our member communities. So we are looking at options and we can maybe find a, an even less expensive solution by the time we get to 2021.
I'm more familiar with the work that Pam Adams is doing now. And I know that it's, her workload is, is pretty tough. There's a lot of things that she wants to, that she can't do because of the time limitations. And the climate change, of course, is on, always on a critical trajectory. So I guess I was wondering, I was looking for that cost analysis, basically the hourly salary of a professional secretary versus the hourly salary of the staff.
Right, the, the item that's reflected there in the 22,500 was identif, was calculated based on the number of hours that staff like Pam and Shelley and Joe and Becca and all of the professional staff and office managers who did minutes last year, based on 2019 figures, viewing that as a typical year. And then we did a little quick market analysis of what a, a secretary or clerk sort of function would be. And that's what that would cost based on, on the number of hours devoted to minutes. So we did try to project that. I don't have those numbers right at hand. But again, we are looking at other options as well.
Okay. Yeah, so, so I actually might look more favorably upon that. And not included in the blanket recommendation to not look at any new employees or programs. But in the spirit of unanimity from our board, I'm willing to go along with Dan's proposal. That's it.
Okay, any other board comments or questions? Couple of things. I, I, I talked to Joe earlier today because I had a couple of questions about why certain things were in here. I thought that were already resolved. And just to let the rest of the board know on the, if you have these comments in front of you, it would be, oh, they're all page ones. That's not helpful. Let's see, number, number 99, Millbrook Marsh Nature Center capital budget. The municipality is contributing to $200,000 to cost the Phase Two addition to the Spring Creek Education Building. I thought we had already approved that, but Joe reminded me that what we approved last year was just pledges so that Pam Salacangas could go ahead and, and do grant proposals showing a commitment from the municipalities. What this, this entry here means that it's requesting the municipality's pledge be converted to actual contributions. But, and this total would be divided up for two years. 100,000 for the first year, 100,000 for the second year. I don't recall the specific number that our, our share would be, but that's, that's just a, a commitment to go ahead and commit some funds for, to support our pledge. And the second, the next item, the 103, 45,000 to be installed in irrigation system by Old Road Regional Park. We had discussed that early and it was just my personal opinion that I, I didn't think it was a need but a, but a convenience. But anyway, we had already voted on that and basically approved it, but contingent on the funds being found within the, the amount that was, that was already approved. So without any additional supplemental funding for that. I just wanted to see if the board, any of the board members wanted to change that or keep it the way it is. The board determined that no additional funds would be provided for construction of Phase One. And that also applies for the request for a storage building at Old Road Regional Park. Board members want to make any changes in that?
I, I would like to reconsider that vote on the irrigation. Certainly I had a talk with Eric last week and he brought up some points I hadn't considered. I mean, the, the most obvious one is the cost savings of putting that in now, cost savings over a number of years. Regarding, I'm just looking at the other. And I don't know that I have an opinion on the storage area. Do you have a num, a number on that offhand? I can just look over that. Is that number one of?
The amount?
This regional park capital budget, so it would be in that. The number on the, on the left-hand margin?
105.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
And the, the numbers on the left margin of the page numbers in your program plan document could have more detail.
Gotcha.
The construction estimate of the maintenance building that was reflected in the program plan document was 75,000. We are working on updated figures and trying to see if we can get a simple pole barn design and, and structure that would be less expensive than that. So Pam, in addition to the grants that are described in the document in front of you, has also been working with various vendors, whether it's for irrigation or the maintenance building, to try and come up with cost savings using modular buildings and, and that sort of thing, for example, on restrooms. So we are planning to provide an update in September for all of the members of the general forum through kind of a lunch and learn process where we can share all of the updates in terms of fundraising and updated costs on the project. And Joe can update on financing and we'll be discussing that with the finance committee tomorrow. But there's continuing effort to try to bring in the project as, as close to budget as possible, but recognizing that there are a lot of changes that have taken place since that budget was established in terms of inflation and cost increases.
Yeah, for sure.
So Betsy, are you proposing to the board consider additional funding for the irrigation system? Is that what you were suggesting?
Certainly, certainly for the irrigation system. And I, yeah, I guess just from recent conversations with Eric on that.
None of the current parks have any kind of irrigation system and not even sprinklers. Is that right, Eric? They just rely on natural rainfall to keep them watered?
I'm not aware of any, but I know that's something that if you look at many of our fields right now that are dry and being worn out from plague without the rain that we've been lacking over the past few weeks, we're certainly seeing the cost of that. But so we are trying to plan ahead, and I know Pam's been working on looking at cost-effective ways to provide that, both in terms of the construction as well as the water.
Elliot has his hand up.
I like the approach that Eric is taking with looking at cutting costs of things that we're going to be building. And then if we have money left over and we are not coming up short, and sure, let's go ahead with the irrigation as soon as we can. But again, we may have to wait a little bit. The other thing might be to provide the growing of cactus out there rather than these kind of waterhawk plants that we have. I didn't mean that.
You're not proposing that we have a cactus turf field, right?
No.
Okay. Yeah.
It's just that that's what looks like it would grow now.
Yeah, all right. Any other comments?
I like the approach of trying to do the same things we're thinking of doing, but less expensively.
So Betsy is basically proposing that we consider supporting financially the irrigation Anybody else think that's something we ought to take, a position the board should take?
I support Betsy.
Okay, Pam agrees.
I also agree.
Okay.
I also.
I agree. If we do it now, it's fine. If it's probably a couple of years after everything is in, that's whatever, the dam, we can't do it.
Yeah, that's the argument that's always been made, to do it now while, before they even start putting in any kind of fields, you have to put that stuff underground first. Well, I'm not going to hold it up. Sounds like we have a majority of the board who's willing to consider funding, contributing to the funding towards the irrigation system. So we can add, change that in our comments, and I'll mention that tomorrow at the finance committee meeting. What about the storage building? Any thoughts on that? Leave it the way it is? No additional funds from the municipalities?
I think that's right.
Okay. We'll leave that the way it is. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on. Consent agenda. Now consent agenda has a number of items on it. The assumption is unless a board member wishes to speak to any individual one of these items, these are items that the board would probably approve without discussion. So let me ask if there are any board members who wish to pull any of these items on the consent agenda out to discuss separately from the rest of them. Hearing none. Elliot, move. Do we accept the consent agenda any second?
Second.
Who was that? Who spoke?
Well, me, unless we spoke and you listened. It doesn't matter.
Take your pick. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? No one opposed? Passes. Next, manager's report.
The development update was included in your agenda packet. If there's any questions, I respond to those. The oak wilt that we suspected on Morningside Circle came back positive. Staff will be taking the appropriate steps to get the tree removed and do the other treatments that we need to do around there. I think Ken mentioned one other one, but I'm not sure exactly where it is now, but I will follow up with him and give you an update on that in September. There were several pieces of correspondence. County is starting a clean, property-assessed clean energy program. Information was provided with a report from Census, our local Census liaison about response rates. We're a little bit, we're kind of like right on the bubble now. We were way behind, but we're catching up with some of the other folks, but we are still a little behind. We'll be pushing the Census a little bit harder here in the next few weeks, especially as the return of students, advising them that if they haven't responded, they still can, they just need to go online and report where they lived on April 1, and just provide whatever information they know. If they don't have all the information, that's fine. They're not expecting to know everything, and if multiple roommates reply, Census Bureau has a way to manage that also. So we're asking people, if you have not yet responded on 2020 Census, please do so. Probably the easiest way to do it is online. Be more information in the newsletter that'll come out in the next few weeks. There was some information from Center of Life Link about closing their Hawbaker Industrial Drive location due to not really a lack of business, but a downturn in number of calls that they're responding to. They will continue to run service out of their Putt and Town Road location plus the University Drive location. NPO long-range transportation plan is out for public comment. There's public meeting on September 2. The State Transportation Commission also has published a new 12-year plan, and that's available for review and comment if you'd like also. And with that, the end of my report.
Any questions or comments? Next is committee reports. Mr. Abrams?
Seems they've left us for a moment.
Well, let's move to.
I think all the items from the July exec committee agenda went to the general forum meeting, so.
Yeah. Well, they had a meeting yesterday as well.
Yeah, that's down further on the list there.
Okay. Transportation and land use. Ms. Rob.
Okay, we did a discussion on the COG committee structure review. Thanks to Mr. Eric Hubert. Jim May did the presentation. Due to the COVID crisis, forced COG to take a look at the COG community structure. The decision was how they're doing the COG committees and how they organize. The executive director arranged it as short, medium, and long-range proposals in which would be presented at the other committees for their feedback. A suggestion was made by one of the committee members to put the call-in number on all the agendas for individuals that were having technical problems. This was a very good suggestion, which the committee agreed. The minimum term, we talked about the agenda management and agenda software, as we discussed about the minutes to condense how minutes are being written. Let's see, we also, we were also reminded that CNET records the meetings, so there is a record that can be obtained on the website. Just as Eric spoke on the time taking minutes were tracked for the last year, and the combined time was 28 weeks of writing minutes for all. The staff was looking for guidance on how they could work on this issue. There was no action taken. We also talked about related response on the COVID-19 pandemic and potential impacts moving forward. As you know, each municipalities has forced, was forced to do an immediate planning and zoning response to the COVID, including in action and short-term strategies. We discussed college rural use of permits, temporary use of some other uses was the Mountain Nifty Medical Center to use parking lots as the COVID-19 testing. Temporary permits for outdoor use to help businesses with curbside pickups and parking minimum. The redevelopment agency was offering small businesses relief programs that had some loans available. They're working, they were working with Pendock to remove one lane of traffic on College and Beaver. This is to be addressed on the short-term issues. We also talked about traffic was less due to COVID, but will be increasing. See, impact. We talked about the impact node of decrease in income and increase in expenses. Suggestion made to monitor levels of need in housing security and housing affordability issues, to have a subcommittee to keep in touch with the county and borough because they have the rental assistance to see what the requests are like and also what the impact is. For example, what is the impact on the food banks? And finally, matter of record, there was a letter sent to Senator Toomey on behalf of the PA, APA, American Planning Association, for his support in providing relief to state and local governments. APA, the APA was asking members to contact Senator to express their support for legislation that will provide need physical support for state and local governments. Senator Toomey's support is critical to the passage of this release bill. Our next meeting is September the 14th, 2020.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions? All right, next, ad hoc facilities. Larry?
Okay, so our meeting was on August 4. First thing on the agenda was the project updates, where we talked about the Millbrook Marsh Nature Center blockways, where they have completed the RFPs and information's coming back from vendors to be scored. We talked about the code office renovation. At that point in time, they were cleaning the suite. They were getting ready to go through the punch list, which should have been last week, and they were waiting for some furniture for lighting, and their move-in date should be sometimes. The COG building window inspection was started last week of July, had finished last week of July. They needed to replace more than 80% of the jam liners. So many of the screens are broken also, so they're going to be looking at how they can fix those and replace screens that are missing. So they're getting a cost for replacing and repairing the screens. The HVAC unit research, they are reviewing options for replacing or changing out the HVAC system, and the Borough has extensive knowledge of the heat pumps and air purifiers, so they were supposed to help. The second thing on the agenda was the facilities visioning exercise. So they did, we did a little tweaking on the vision statement, and it was accepted after a small change and passed unanimously. Then we discussed our values and goals and for the vision statement, the values and goals in addition to the vision statement, and all that was passed on to the executive committee. Then we reviewed the COG fixed asset listing and the CIP, and we looked at options for building, where we could place the maintenance facility and how we could look at Parks Maintenance Facility, whether we wanted to build something, continue renting, or et cetera. And the last that we talked about was we canceled the September meeting, by the way, and that we were changing, trying to get the committee changed from an ad hoc to a standard. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Larry. Any questions? Next, Public Services and Environment. Betsy Whitman?
All right, make sure I'm unmuted. We did discuss a little bit the committee structure. Eric took copious notes. I'm sure others have those discussions also. So we'll visit those, I guess, at the general forum again. I'm not going to go over them now. The really cool project, the UAJA is proposing this, they're calling it the Residential Solar Project. They recognize that the biggest reason that solar projects fail is because they don't have follow-through. So individual homeowners might get excited about solar. Solar is the way to go now. People are, well, been interested in a long time, but when the homeowners realize the expense and, you know, the number of years that they would be paying for that, or the down payment they have to do, the financing is yada, yada, yada. So UAJA, the board, thought, I was thinking outside the box, and they were thinking if they can provide the financing for residents interested in solar project, they can do it, provide the financing at a much lower rate than commercial financing could. And I don't understand all the intricacies of that. I'm sure Larry would, but suffice it to say that UAJA was asking permission from the Public Services and Environmental Committee, not that they need our permission to do it. We gave them the nod to go ahead and pursue that so that it is, UAJA is essentially providing a service only because they're able to provide lower interest rates, if that's what it is, for customers in the center region, predominantly in the center region. It might, there might be some outside at a later date. The number of people that they would be able to offer this to is 300. I'm not sure, certain where that number came from, but it's just an exciting project. It'll be presented, I believe, at COG at some point, so keep an eye out for it. That's it.
Thank you, Betsy. Any questions? Okay, next, public safety. Ms. Rob again. Pam?
Yes, we're doing public safety. We did an update article. We talked, we discussed the update articles of agreement for the center regent building and how and housing code. Board of Appeals. The subject, and there was a problem with the board being number, having an extensive number on the board, then difficulty in getting people to serve on the board and to continue to serve on the Board of Appeals. Also, another problem was scheduling a time which everyone would need. The recommendation is to propose reorganization. One question that was asked, how many appeals had the board, board heard so far? So far was one every three years. A modification, they're doing, they're going to do another presentation for the committee once they modify it. The review would be in September, and then they will be moving it through the municipality process. The 2000, 2001 Cog Program Plan Review was presented by the directors, Chief Steve Bear, the Emergency Management Director, Sean Kaufman, and the co-director, Walter Snyder. For Chief Bear, they're not looking for no new additions. He was awaiting a study at the end of the month. The SAFER Grant, which has been, has funded a tremendous amount of television, radio, and social advertisement, is due to expire November 14th, 2020. It's usually a five-year grant. We're in the fifth year, fifth and final year of the SAFER Grant. Chief is not planning to do another SAFER Grant for that particular purpose. His, his concern is the safe, the study comes in and it might suggest to add a person or two sooner than what they thought. The chief would prefer to apply the SAFER Grant that would help fund a position and not to recruit. The chief also has budgeted a new apparatus. He explained that in the capital plan, it looks, it looks at holding a fire engine for 20 years. In this last two to three cycles, they have delayed purchasing a vehicle. If the vehicle would support doing so, they're coming up on a 2021 cycle. That vehicle is going to need to be replaced, and there is money set aside for that purpose. Emergency Management Director's report from Sean Kaufman, no new projects. Their big project in the future, they're hoping to find a closure to the COVID-19. There was a joint exercise project with Penn State that was supposed to ha, happen. Money was put aside in the capital plan for that project, but due to the COVID-19, it has been pushed into 2022. Sean will try to have an action plan report on COVID once it starts to have some kind of closure. From the contingency fund, $15,000 was spent on meals on wheels for the COVID-19 pan epidemic. There was no opposition to it. Everyone was in total support. And lastly, we have code, where Director Walter Snyder, the code office is not pursuing any significant projects other than what was requested earlier this year by the committee. They're moving into, I find it, they were looking into purchasing a plug-in hydric electrical vehicle. They're, they're also looking into state grants in order to see about putting charging stations at the Cog Building. Working through this project and their updates, they will extend modifications that are coming through for next year. One of our committee members asked about what was on the review sheet that didn't mention that the vehicles were hybrid and described them as electrical, and that was a concern. The, they're going to be making corrections that will describe the vehicle as a plug-in electrical hydrant. Cog Structure Committee Review, as Eric has gone through it with all our committees, is the same report and presentation that will be given to all our committees, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions? Next, Betsy. Climate Action and Adaptation Technical Advisory Group.
Sure, so the TAG, the Technical Advisory Group, has been holding a series of seminars since June. They've had one in energy. This is where experts, five to six experts and more come together and talk about emissions of greenhouse gases and possible ways to reduce those. So energy being energy from houses and other buildings. Another seminar was on solid waste. They had one recently on transportation, which is, transportation is proving very complex because it seems to overlap with many other areas. The one coming up in September is on agriculture. Agriculture actually contributes a very small part of our total greenhouse gases in the area because we don't have that much agriculture in the center region, but nonetheless, we're bringing that in. So they're sort of coming to the end of these series of seminars, gathering information about specific ways to ameliorate greenhouse gas. So the next step would be to take it to the public, the stakeholders in this. The main discussion at the TAG meeting this week was on a survey that Pam Adams had worked on to go out to members of the community. We talked about making that survey also a random sample so that we'd have some, you know, scientific data from it. Basically, the survey is going to be trying to assess how much information people already have about climate change, how they, how they feel about it, what actions are they willing to take to reach these goals? So that's still on the working stage, but we're, it's, it's an exciting next step.
Thank you, Betsy. Any comments, questions? All right, next, Exec Committee. Mr. Abrams?
We almost canceled the meeting for this coming Monday, but Amy Farquhar's township pointed out that there are many things that we may be able to do as a Cog to help people in the short term to get through the COVID crisis, and she's going to be talking about that, so we are ready to go ahead and have a meeting.
Okay. Finance Committee's meeting tomorrow, so I have no report. Solar Power Working Group. Betsy Whitman?
Yeah, Betsy? September.
Yeah, that's in the future. That's September 16. We didn't have any, that's all right.
September, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
That's all right.
Okay. We don't have any more committee reports, is that right?
Well, human res, oh, yeah, right.
Oh, CCNPO.
Oh, Item E, NPO.
Item B?
E.
Oh, E. NPO?
That should be Pam, not Elliot.
Okay, Pam?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The CCNPO was August 4. The agenda included the State College Area Connector Project, presentation about planning the environmental linkage PEL process, and the Penn Doc SCAC consultant. There was the presentation explaining what the PEL study was, the process, the process which included planning and environmental linkage study, preliminary engineering, environmental study, the final engineering, engineering design, the right-of-way acquisition and construction. The process has seven steps, and the data source has three sections, environmental, traffic, and engineering. How will the public and agencies be involved? There will be a lead agency, a coordinating agency, a participating agency, public and local agency involvement. Actions, they're, they're looking for comments to go to Penn Doc and the consulting team. There was a presentation continued with the Long Range Transportation Plan for 2050. The new plan of 2050 is still evolving, and elements of the plan will be, continue to be modified prior to the adoption date of 2020. The CCNPO staff reviewed the following items. All of these are drafts. The draft, LRTP outline, policy elements, transit, project list, the bicycle, pedestrian process, project list, highway project list, and state and local bridge project list. They have reviewed the timeline for the LRTP for 2050 adoption. Key dates are August 14th, which has just passed, the initial of a 30-day comment period, September 2nd, 2020, or virtual public meetings to review the input of a plan. September the 9th is the technical committee will consider recommendation. September the 14th is another public committee, comments that will end. September the 22nd, coordinating committees will consider action to adopt the plan. For the time limit on the L draft, the public review for the third, 30-period days will be Friday, August 14th, that just passed, at 12:00 p.m. to September the 14th. The virtual public meeting will be received on a Zoom meeting, September the 2nd, at 6:00 p.m. And the final action were comments to be sent to NPO staff about the draft plan, outline, policy element, project list, and short-term action plan. Our next meeting is scheduled for September the 22nd at 6:00, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions? Okay, that finishes our committee reports. Is there any business, additional business anyone wants to bring up? Seeing none, accept a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
It's moved and seconded. We are so adjourned. Thank you for your...